We will please convene the Montecito Planning Commission's special hearing of December 5th, 2012. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, our nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, with liberty and justice for all.
David, would you please do the television coverage announcement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on Kenny and Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. We broadcast at Montecito Planning Commissions on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Now for the roll call, Commissioner Gonsdaker.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Ofrall.
Here.
Commissioner Idelson.
Here.
And Commissioner Bros.
Here.
Thank you.
We will now move to public comment. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to any item not on today's agenda? Thank you very much. Before we move on to a reading of the only item on the standard agenda, I would like to acknowledge that we lost Fire Chief McElway this week. He passed away on Monday, I believe. He contributed a great deal to Montecito. He was Fire Chief for many years and to the broader community. Some people don't know, but without his leadership, Montecito would not now have the community-based paramedics. He led on that issue, as he did on many others. We send our condolences to his family and we wish them well. We will now please move on to standard agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department. The Montecito Planning Commission consider A) 12 GPA 3, it should recommend that the County Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the Board of Supervisors adopt or propose amendment to the Santa Barbara County Comprehensive Plan Housing Element. And B) for 12 R D 15, recommend that the County Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the Board of Supervisors adopt and propose Inclusionary Housing Ordinance as Chapter 46A of the County Code.
Thank you very much. We will now move to the staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair. And good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Jeff Hunt, Deputy Director of Long Range Planning. With me this morning is Alan Bell, Supervising Planner, and Erica Leachman, the Senior Planner and the person who's done the lion's share of work on this. We also have Dinah Lockhart and Margot Wagner from the County Housing and Community Development Department or Division. The item today before you involves actions concerning two documents. One is amendments to the housing element. This would include removal of the existing Inclusionary Housing Program and then revising and adding new policies to the housing element. The second is the adoption of a new ordinance into the county code. So this would codify the existing Inclusionary Housing Program as a new Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And as long as we're making this effort, the direction we have is to consider revising the provisions concerning Inclusionary Housing. So it's, even though the proposal is for a new ordinance before you, it's important to realize that the Inclusionary Housing Program is in existence today. And this has influenced staff's recommendation. We've interpreted our direction to revise the existing provisions, not abolish or start over or get the program. Because the housing element amendments go be on the Montecito Community Plan area and because the new ordinance would not be part of your Land Use and Development Code, technically the Montecito Planning Commission does not have to review this. But we felt that due to the importance of housing to our community, it's well documented that we have high housing costs. We have testimony and documentation that businesses find it challenging in regard to getting and retaining workers. There's long commuting times. The housing element is even singled out in state law for special review. It's the one required element of our comprehensive plan that's mandated to be reviewed on a basis. Ours is eight years. We have our RENA allocation. So because of the importance of housing in our community, we felt that the Montecito Planning Commission's input would be important. And with that, I'll turn it over to Erica for the staff presentation and we'd all be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Please. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present the draft Housing Element Amendments and the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance project. To give you an overview of what we'll be seeing today, our presentation has four main components. First, we'll be talking about some background info to bring you up to speed on what Inclusionary Housing is and what our program currently provides. Secondly, we'll be talking about the outreach and input generated that helps staff determine what about the existing IHP or Inclusionary Housing Program should change as part of this project. Following that, we'll talk, we'll explain what changes and amendments are being proposed for the IHP as part of the project. And last but not least, we'll talk about the next steps in the process and what you can expect to hear and see for the project moving forward. So as an overview for the overall project objective, the objective of this long-range project is to evaluate and update the provisions of the county's existing Inclusionary Housing Program as implementation of Program 1.2 of the Housing Element. The scope of the project includes two main components. As Jeff mentioned, it's amending the Housing Element, Chapter 5 to be specific. This is largely to address where we need policy to address Inclusionary Housing requirements and pave the way for the ordinance as implementation of Program 1.2. And then secondly, it's to transfer the existing IHP from the Housing Element into an ordinance form. As part of this process, we can also take an opportunity to increase the efficiency of the program, including addressing transparency and the consistency of its implementation over the long term and in doing so, maintain the existing constructs of the program. More substantive revisions are needed to respond to changes in law and apparent, the apparent recessed residential market that we're experiencing in this county and across the country right now, as well as improve the program's public transparency and flexibility to respond to that market moving forward. So paired with the Housing Element Amendment to provide the policy basis for the ordinance, the draft Inclusionary Housing Ordinance contains eight sections. Purpose and intent, definitions, applicability and exemptions, the requirements themselves, the Inclusionary Housing requirements, followed by the incentives for Inclusionary Housing, then implementation of the requirements, and then lastly, adjustments, waivers and severability. So today's staff is recommending that the Montecito Planning Commission consider the proposed Housing Element Amendment and the draft Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and recommend that the planning commission, the County Planning Commission, recommend the board adopt both as implementation of Program 1.2. By way of background, Inclusionary Housing Programs are, Housing Programs that require the development of price-restricted housing units as part of new development, where a portion of the new units created as part of a project are reserved for sale to qualified low and moderate income households, while the remaining units have no price restrictions. This approach distributes housing affordability throughout a jurisdiction, so in the county, it's a county-wide policy. The county of Santa Barbara has maintained some type of Inclusionary Housing Program within our jurisdiction since 1981 as one of many strategies to facilitate the development of affordable housing units in otherwise high-cost residential markets. Inclusionary Housing requirements have been amended periodically over the years as part of the Housing Element Updates. The existing Inclusionary Housing Program was last amended in 2004 and as it is right now, it has moved forward since 2004, requiring that projects proposed with five residential units or more restrict a particular percentage or portion of those units for very low, low, moderate, or workforce-income households as specified by each housing market area, which are sub-areas of the county jurisdiction. A developer may satisfy these requirements to price-restrict a particular portion of the units by constructing the units as affordable units, or a developer may opt for alternatives to developing those units, including donation of property or payment of fees in lieu of building those units on-site. Currently, the Inclusionary Housing Program requires unique percentages of a development to be price-restricted to affordable levels by HMA, Housing Market Area. While each household income category requires a percentage somewhere between 5% and 10% currently, in total, the projects in the South Coast and the San Inez Housing Market Areas, I should mention the Montecito Planning Areas within the South Coast Housing Market Area, so it's a subset of that. Projects within those two, those two Housing Market Areas are required to price-restrict 30% of the proposed units for affordable housing. And projects in the Santa Maria and Lompoc HMAs are required to price-restrict 20% of the proposed units. I should also mention that the Kuyama HMA is exempt from the requirements currently in the IHP because the home sales prices continue to be affordable in that area. Also, as part of the existing program, there is a structure for in-lu fees. If a developer does not want to construct and deed-restrict or price-restrict the units on-site, there's an option to pay fees in lieu of construction. The 2004 Inclusionary Housing Program in-lu fees were developed and adopted by Resolution of the Board of Supervisors in 2004 and were based on research from that time, a study in particular, that was prepared by Bay Area Economics to determine the appropriate in-lu fee for those units. The Board of Supervisors adopted two distinct fee types. Number one, the cost to subsidize affordable units. This would be the appropriate fee for paying in lieu of building very low and low units that would otherwise be required. And number two, the cost to construct the affordable units, which is, this is the actual cost of construction for the unit foregone as part of the project. The project, this project, I should mention, does not include an update to this fee amount, the actual dollar amount that is charged in lieu of construction. The methodology by which these fees are annually adjusted or the research that went into establishing them has not changed, and so those numbers are moving forward as part of the project. So since 2004, a range of inputs have influenced how and where the Inclusionary Housing Program is recommended to change as part of this project. In 2007, reports from the county auditor and a board-appointed Affordable Housing Committee made 13 recommendations for specific improvements to the Inclusionary Housing Program, and the boards supported 11 of them. As Attachment 6 to your staff report today, there's a matrix itemizing the 13 recommendations and the response to each of those as part of this project. Then in 2009, the county retained Economic Planning Systems, which is a financial and economic consulting firm, to evaluate the 2004 Inclusionary Housing Program and report to us some findings about where it's working and where it's not. This report is also attached as Attachment 10. During the development of this Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, the county held a series of meetings between August 2011 and August 2012 to discuss the potential provisions of the IHO and the Housing Element Amendment with stakeholders, including representatives from the local home builders association and housing advocacy agencies, especially for low-income housing in the community. Also, home sales data was collected by the county assessor and analyzed by staff to determine what types of homes and which affordability levels are being provided in each HMA, to assess where we are and understand where, what trends are moving forward. Taken together, the input and outreach has resulted in some clear conclusions about the scope of changes recommended to the existing program, namely that in the North County, HMAs including Lompoc and Santa Maria, the housing market is meeting some affordability needs. In the South County, there retains some need for affordable housing based on that market research we've done. Also, in talking to the home builders associations, one, the issue of timing and the timing of fee payment came up. As it is right now, fees are required to be paid at map recordation, and this has been an issue because it's so early in the planning process that having the funds available to pay the fees comes at an early stage and causes some difficulty. Also, we heard that the requirements are overall just burdensome, that the economy has changed and the Inclusionary Housing requirements are too burdensome for development. And last but not least, that the program is a little, it needs some improvements for transparency's sake, to be able to understand what is required, how to comply, and what a developer can expect moving forward. So based on these conclusions, we would like to summarize the amendments proposed for the Housing Element and the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Things that we, while the program is more comprehensive than this, we didn't want to spend too much time on things that aren't changing, of course. We wanted to highlight those things that are being recommended. So for the Housing Element Amendment itself, there's some very specific things that are being added to the, to Chapter 5, the goals, policies and programs for the Housing Element. First of all, we are proposing to delete the Inclusionary Housing Program entirely from the Housing Element. It currently lives as Appendix A in the Housing Element, and the IHO and the policies would supplant the need for that. So that would be proposed to be deleted. It also amends Program 1.2 to reflect that the, that the IHO is not going to live in the zoning ordinance. And if you read Program 1.2 currently, it directs staff to amend the zoning ordinance to address Inclusionary Housing. So we'll be amending that to show that it's now going to be a standalone ordinance and not related to zoning. The amendment also includes policy to support Inclusionary Housing. It removes any reference to rental housing price restrictions, since that's no longer part of the project, and also adds policy to address the design of affordable housing. So the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, to highlight some changes that we're proposing to the program there, is proposed to continue to require affordable housing percentages by Housing Market Area. The map you see here is the county as a whole divided up into the Housing Market Areas. However, given the shift in the housing market conditions since 2007, the first change being considered is to reduce the Inclusionary Housing requirements to 20% for all HMAs except Kuyama, which is proposed to continue to be exempt. Additionally, the 2012 program builds flexibility back into the program with a self-adjusting provision to reduce or eliminate the Inclusionary Housing requirements for moderate and/or workforce-income categories when the housing market area is providing affordable housing without deed restriction. So for example, in Santa Maria, where market rate housing is affordable categorically for households, in those situations, the requirement would go away for workforce housing or go away for moderate housing if the market analysis annually demonstrates that that's an opportunity. This provision would be based on an annual assessment by the County Community Services Department. In those situations where a year of home sales data demonstrates that market sales are affordable to workforce or moderate income households, the requirement would be adjusted to 0% and in doing so, reduce the overall percentage required of projects. For example, for the 2012-13 fiscal year, the Inclusionary Housing requirements would be adjusted so that 5% very low and low would be required for San Inez, Lompoc and Santa Maria for a total of 10%. And 5% very low, 5% low and 5% moderate would be required in South Coast for a total of 15%. This revision is intended to reduce the financial barriers for development and its pro formas while also providing for the current demonstrated need for affordable housing. Lastly, I should also mention that based on those requirements, we also have a new provision for small projects. As I mentioned, the IHO is applicable to projects of five or more, but for small projects, those that are between five and nine units, the requirements have been fully customized to require just one unit of moderate, of moderate restriction housing for those small Also, as alternatives to constructing the IHOs, we do maintain alternatives. So if a developer does not want to or cannot for some reason provide those units on-site, a developer may pay in-lu fees. The, as I mentioned, no update is proposed for the actual amount in the in-lu fees, but the structure is still there. And we've actually added a new alternative as well. The county currently permits residential second units for single-family lots and considers them to be a viable source of affordable housing, especially for elderly and limited-income households. So as such, a provision is being proposed to allow for the Inclusionary requirements for workforce households to be fulfilled when the development includes a proportional amount of residential second units. So if for each workforce deed restriction, you build one residential second unit as part of the market rate lot, that would satisfy the workforce income category only. So to comply with these regulations, an eligible project would be conditioned to fulfill the IHO requirements on a case-by-case basis, working with not only planning and development staff, but also staff at Housing and Community Development. To incentivize construction of the IHO requirements on-site, a density bonus is also proposed. Within the coastal zone, because an in-lu fee alternative is not available under state law, for each unit constructed on-site, an additional market rate unit may be permitted and over base density, zoning density. For the inland area, the same density bonus is afforded, but only for the moderate and workforce units constructed on-site, and that's actually the current program, the one expansion we're allowing, or one additional incentive is for the coastal zone only. Also, as an incentive to allow for or to aid in the development of the density bonus, there's a provision addressing zoning modifications that would help and make it easier and allow for the density bonus to be constructed as part of the project. So one innovation that we have added to the IHO is a section addressing implementation. As the program is currently written, while the policies do address implementation, most of it is internal and has caused some problems because, you know, understanding the process and what a developer has to do in order to comply has not been posted on the website, for example. So one thing we are including is an implementation section in the IHO to address not only how to adjust the Inclusionary Housing requirements and the amount of the in-lu fee annually, but also how to set the maximum sales price of the affordable units moving forward once they are deed-restricted, and also steps for how to condition the approval of the projects and how to record deed-restricted units consistently each time a project is subject to the ordinance. So with that overview of the main changes of, to the Inclusionary Housing Program, we did want to give you a couple of examples. Really, when it boils down to it, these are often the questions that we get, we say, we hear, yes, that's great, good to hear, but what does that mean? So what we wanted to show, show you is a comparison of what a hypothetical project, again, this is very hypothetical. Each project is processed on a case-by-case basis, and so we wanted to pick some clear examples of what would happen for a small project and a large project that would be subject to the IHO. For a five-unit project in the South Coast HMA, hypothetically, under the 2004 Inclusionary Housing Program requirements, which require 30% of all the, of the affordable units be deed-restricted, that would require either the construction of four of those units to be price-restricted or a fee, a fee out, a payment of in-lu fees of about $460,000. However, that's, that's, you know, either this or that. What is likely or more typical that we've seen with the program is that a developer will opt to mix and match the options, build some affordable units and pay, and pay in-lu fees for others, generally, you know, choosing the one that's most appropriate for the project and most cost-effective. Because the fees are typically much higher for the moderate and workforce units, often what we'll see is that a developer will choose to build the moderate workforce units required and pay the fee for very low and low because the fee is much lower. So assuming that that's the scenario for the project, the expected scenario for this project would be to construct two units, one moderate, one workforce, and fee out at $54,300. So comparing that to what would be required under the IHO requirements, which overall require a reduction, 20% of the units to be deed-restricted, since it's a small project, we would only require one unit to be constructed at a moderate level, or you could fee out of that unit for $64,288. However, you know, given this scenario, likely because of the cost, we would see, we would see the fee out in this situation with a small, with a small project. So comparing that to a larger project, 20 units, for example, in, under the IHP, we would expect to see either the construction of six units or a fee out of $1,840,000. However, you know, assuming that they would build moderate and workforce and pay fees for the very low and low, we could expect the construction of four units and a fee out of $217,000. Comparing that to the reduced requirements for the IHO, we would expect either the construction of four units or a fee out of $1 million, $1,028,600, or what would be more likely is the construction of two units and the payment of $217,000. So you can see overall, as a takeaway, is that there's an overall reduction in the requirements. It may not change the actual dollar amount, but that starting amount of requiring less affordable units overall pencils out differently for projects in the long run without foregoing Inclusionary Housing overall. So last but not least, looking at next steps, through winter 2012 through 13, staff will be processing the General Plan Amendment. Since it's an amendment to the Housing Element, it is subject to state review from State Housing and Community Development. So after we receive your feedback today and also take this project to the County Planning Commission, we'll be processing that with the state. The state is responsible for reviewing and certifying the amendment and giving us comments back so that we can take those comments to the Board of Supervisors as part of their consideration. And you can expect to see this project reach the county for adoption and implementation beginning in spring of 2013. And with that, thank you very much for your attention to the report, and of course, we welcome any questions.
Thank you so much. Does the commission have any questions or comments? Scott, on your please.
Yeah, just a curiosity. This is an area that I really don't understand very well, but anyway, what happens to the in-lu fee money? Where does that money go?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Gonsdaker, I think that's a really good segue into, why are these two other people sitting at the table?
Okay.
And they are from the Community Services Department, the new department that is a combination of our old Housing and Community Development Department and Parks Department, among others. And they're the housing side of things, and perhaps they can just speak a little bit about what sorts of things they do with that money.
Please, we would love to hear your report.
Oh, good morning, Commissioner. My name is Dinah Lockhart, and I'm the new Deputy Director for the now Housing and Community Development Division. Margot Wagner is also here, and she implements the program, the Inclusionary Housing Program. Those fees do come to HCD and become part of what's called the Local Fund.
We are making an adjustment to the sound system, so those listening people better understand.
I apologize for that. Okay. As I was saying, those funds do come to the Housing and Community Development Division and become part of what's called the Local Fund. And those funds are then used to assist affordable housing developments in the unincorporated area of Santa Barbara County. So they do come and they are recommended for various projects, which are then approved by the Board of Supervisors.
In other words, that a developer pays his in-lu fees, he goes ahead and builds his development, and then those fees come to you, and then you pay those to a developer to build new affordable units? Or, that's, see, it's kind of, that's where, it's kind of sick, it seems like at the end, the developer wins either way.
And can the funds be granted to an individual?
That's what, I think maybe my misunderstanding of how it works.
Every year, the Housing and Community Development Division issues what's called a Notice of Funding Availability. It's called a NOFA. And in that NOFA, we include funds that are available from federal sources as well as local funds. And so, an affordable housing developer or someone who wants to develop affordable housing- housing solely, would apply to HCD. They could apply for federal funds, and they could apply for those local funds. And so the project that's reviewed by staff and recommended to the Board of Supervisors would be an affordable housing project. So those funds are used for affordable housing.
And typically, those are, they go to nonprofit organizations that build homeless shelters.
Habitat for Humanity.
People's Self-Help Housing.
Or other types of housing, not just shelters.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, I know Habitat for Humanity is building several, and I'm assuming they're all affordable.
They would be, they would be some, an example, who would be a recipient of those funds.
Okay, thank you.
And so these are administered as a grant to the nonprofit?
They're actually...
And monitored by the county?
They're monitored by the county, but they're actually not a grant. They're a loan.
A loan.
And they're under head regulations that, you know, for whatever that period of time is, I believe, 30, 40, 50 years, depending on what the Board of Supervisors wants to see the affordability period. We would then monitor on an annual basis to make sure that the occupants are meeting the affordability standards, so.
Mr. Idelson, please.
Looking at the inclusionary housing inventory that we have in the county and the various locations that we have in the county, what percentage of them are actually owned by the occupant? What percent are rented by the occupant?
Well, for the, for the current existing stock that we have, there's approximately 420 in the system that are owned by the occupant. Percentage-wise for rental, that's hard to put my finger on, because some of them are monitored by the actual developer, for example, Tobs. They do their own monitoring and report to us on an annual basis versus a couple of projects that we have that we monitor either on an annual basis or every three years, depending on what the covenant says. I don't have a good, clear number of how many rentals we have.
Let's suppose I was an occupant in one, and I owned it, and I wanted to move out of it, but I also had a friend that would qualify. How would that go? And my friend would like to purchase it?
Then they have to come back through our department. The seller notifies us that they want to sell the property, and then there's a whole process that that buyer would then go through to qualify through us.
But if that buyer does qualify, and you also have a list of names ahead, people that are applying for inclusionary housing, does that buyer get put to the head of the list or not?
So maybe I can restate your question, Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall. I think what you're asking is, does the resale of an affordable unit have to go through the lottery process? Is that your question?
No, it does not. Only new projects go through the lottery process. We do have an interest list that we maintain. We expect the people on the interest list to keep their information updated every six months. When a unit becomes available, we do contact those people, but as per our guidelines, it's the seller that chooses the most qualified applicant. So there could be five or six people in line for a particular unit. The seller has to determine, based on our criteria, who would be the best qualified candidate. And then that candidate then comes to me, or our department, and then we put them through the certification process that's heard by a panel of three independent people within the county that, based on my recommendation, our recommendations, to find that this candidate is a good candidate to proceed.
Mr. Phillips, please.
If I qualified to live in a restricted-deed property, could I then rent it at market?
No, you cannot.
I cannot.
We have a provision in our covenants that state that they have to occupy the property as their primary principal residence for at least 10 out of the 12 months. They're not allowed to rent the property out at all, unless there's a hardship. I mean, we do grant a hardship situation if somebody has a dire situation where they'd have to move out for a particular period of time. For example, I've got an elderly lady living in a one-bedroom who needs to have surgery on her feet, and she has no relatives here, so she's going to move out and move in with one of her daughters who lives up in North Coast. She's applied for a hardship to rent it out on a temporary basis, and obviously, we would grant that because that is a hardship. But under every other circumstance, we do not allow them to rent the property out.
Madam Chair, just one more.
Mr. Phillips, please.
It seems to me there's a major difference in the result from 2004 to today. It's markedly different. Is it that we need less of this? Is that why the units are, the requirement is less today?
Ms. Black, please.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Phillips, we've really tried to structure this ordinance to be more reactive to market conditions, and what we heard particularly in the North County is, you know, we can't market a market rate, or we can't market a restricted unit alongside a market rate unit because the sales price of a restricted unit is actually higher than the market. You could market it at a higher level. And so who in the world would buy a restricted unit even at the same price as a market unit with those restrictions? So, I mean, that sort of started our review of the substance of this ordinance, and we realized, you know, market conditions really have changed fairly substantially. What we were, I think, a bit surprised about is that currently, given all of the data that we analyzed and the formula that we've now incorporated into the ordinance, we don't need workforce housing to be provided as part of affordable housing, even in the South County. And that was, I think, a fairly surprising result from all of us. So what we're really trying to do is to set an ordinance that is more reflective of market conditions. Five years ago, 2004, you wouldn't have seen the results that you're seeing today. So it's really a very, it's a year-by-year result, and the ordinance is drafted to be flexible to those changing market conditions.
So this reflects, today's presentation reflects a more affordable market?
Today's examples reflect a more affordable market. But if the market changes, this ordinance is sufficiently flexible that it'll catch up to those market conditions as they change in the future, hopefully as they go up in the future.
And the affordability measurement?
Yes.
Is a national standard or a state standard or just yours or ours?
Well, there's different things that go into the formula, and I don't want to get into the details because I can't. Erica can, but the affordability standards are based upon Santa Barbara County because we have different income, a different income profile than, like, Alabama. Our affordability requirements are different, and then we also use the current market in Santa Barbara County and in our different housing market areas.
So our ordinance will look very much different than almost everyone's?
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Idelson, please.
Okay, let's suppose you have someone in one of these units, and they've gotten an advancement in their job, so they now, even though they might be into workforce housing, their increase in income is such that they really don't qualify any longer, do you ask them to move out, to sell their unit?
No, sir. Once they've bought the unit, you know, dynamics can change, family size can change, jobs can change, they could win the lottery for that matter, but, and if that's the case, we would hope that they would then move on to, you know, market rate housing and open that unit up for a low-income family. But there's no provisions for us to require them to move if they're, because we don't reanalyze their income year after year.
Okay, let me ask this too, then. If they were to rent it without your knowledge, how long would it be before you would know that this was rented? I mean, do you have a cyclic inspection cycle?
We do an annual survey every year, and we get about a 98% capture rate on those units that asks specific questions. Did you refinance? Did you get the county's approval? Have you rented the property out? You know, did you get the county's approval? Those kind of questions. We do have a compliance officer that will go out and monitor if we suspect that they're not in compliance with their covenant.
Is this onsite? The inspection, is that onsite?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the, Mr. Overall, please.
I have a couple of questions from items in the staff report. In particular, on page eight of the staff report, you're talking about the change that would take place in the ordinance related to rental units and to conform with the Costa Hawkins Act, and I didn't quite follow that. So could you explain what that's all about?
Absolutely. Commissioners, I actually might...
Could you please restate your questions, Mr. Overall?
Oh, yes. To explain that a little bit, the existing IHP requires price restriction for either homes for sale or for rental. There's no distinction between them. A developer may opt to have a rental component as part of an otherwise market rate development. However, recently, in, I believe it was 2007, a court case was processed that made the finding that rental properties cannot be restricted as part of inclusionary housing requirements, and that's what that's referring to, is the case law. I actually might, if there's any specifics about that case law, you may want to speak to that. But in essence, the takeaway is that rental price restrictions are no longer allowed. So, yeah.
What, forgive me, but I don't understand, since I haven't seen the case, I don't get at all what the logic could possibly be behind that, so it would be helpful to hear.
Council, if you please, give us an overview.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, essentially, what the case is saying is there's a restriction for inclusionary housing ordinance, and the preemption is the Costa Hawkins Act, that's rent control. So jurisdictions have the option of price restricting rentals through adopting a rent control ordinance and going through that process. So there are two options, inclusionary housing or adopting a rent control. And actually, the county has rent control for mobile homes, and some jurisdictions have it, a broader rent control program.
So if you adopted, if the county were to adopt a rent control program, could it apply to homes built under the inclusionary housing ordinance?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, I think it would be a completely separate program. You know, I'm generally familiar with the rent control, and it's a very specific process of adoption and very specific components to the ordinance, so I think it would be a separate, a separate program.
There he is on, let's see if I can find it again here. On page 10 of the staff report, near the bottom, you're talking about 46A, 5B. You're talking about allowing zoning modifications, and I wonder how that interacts with community plans that are adopted for whatever the, you know, the jurisdiction is.
Thank you. Yes, the zoning modification provision is paired with the density bonus provision. So to explain, the main incentive for the ordinance and the existing program is to allow for an additional unit over base density, which, as you can imagine, may cause some issues for site planning. I'm sure in working with the arrangement of the units, that would be the difficulty. So to help foster the ability of the county to discretionarily provide for that additional unit, the provision basically says we can make zoning modifications if needed. However, that does not, it doesn't override any sort of general plan policies or general plan land uses or things. We're still working within the confines of the constructs of the community plan and the general plan, but as far as the zoning ordinance modifications, things like setbacks or height limits, those types of things, that's what the provision allows us the discretion to talk about, to say, perhaps, you know, where there might be an opportunity to find modifications to the zoning to allow for that density bonus.
Since I didn't read it further on in the documentation, is that limitation spelled out, that what you're talking about is not changing the total number of units on a parcel, but the setbacks and that kind of thing? Is that, is it spelled out in what you've prepared?
Ms. Black, please.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, before I answer that question, I wanted to go back to the modifications because this is an issue that the commission, your commission deals with on a pretty routine basis in the context of development plans for residential projects. You don't see that many development plans for residential projects, but they often are accompanied with requests for modifying certain ordinance requirements, and your commission is, has the authority to grant modifications if they improve the overall site design, if they do things. So this really kind of builds on that current process that you have and says, hey, this is a really good tool to use when you're planning an affordable housing project. As to your question about density, this program does allow a density increase. So if somebody chooses...
So it's a rezone?
If somebody, no, it's not a rezone. If somebody chooses to provide onsite affordable units in the moderate or workforce range and are required under this ordinance requirements, then they get an additional unit or units to make up for those restricted units that they're providing onsite. So the way we've, the way we've structured the recommendation we're making to the commissions and to the Board of Supervisors is to really incentivize people to fee out on low and very low-income units because, for a myriad of reasons, it's better for the county to use that money and leverage other funds that are available and have a nonprofit provide those units, and to build the moderate and, if required, workforce units onsite, and those would be eligible for a bonus, for an increase in density. Having said that, there aren't a lot of sites in Montecito that are capable of accommodating five or more units.
I think there are two.
So I don't think this is an issue that's going to come up very often for you, slightly different in the coastal zone.
Okay, I have a couple of policy questions.
Please go ahead.
No, I'll come back. I have a couple more.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I want to go back to the second residential unit.
Oh. Going back to the second residential unit issue, and then coupling it with allowing a zoning modification, could a property owner apply for a zoning modification if they had less acreage than, in order to get a second residential unit in there, even if, to make it affordable? This is like, this is kind of, for me, it's really a thing. I'm very personal on this one.
Yes, Commissioners, the residential second units are permitted currently under the Land Use Development Code or Article II, and there's no changes proposed for how those are developed or permitted. So by, so what the ordinance says is that the workforce income category could be satisfied when and if a residential unit is permitted consistent with that code. So in this situation, if there isn't sufficient acreage or if the development has some other constraint that wouldn't allow for the permit of a residential second unit, it wouldn't be allowed as an option for that project. It really is those types of situations where you're having single-family lots that have a particular size, and that requirement for the workforce income category could be satisfied with it. If it couldn't, then it's not an opportunity.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Idelson, please.
Okay, I want to go back and just kind of look at the problem, the problem being we need housing. We need housing for workforce. We need housing for people that have low incomes or don't have the incomes that match up to the cost of housing. But of these 500 or so, I heard you mention, I don't know if the numbers are right. But of these 500 or so, I heard you mention, I don't know if the numbers are right, if most of those are occupied by, truly by people that are, that qualify for those and do not qualify for market rate housing, that's one thing. But if they're allowed to advance economically, just as everybody is in society, free society, they could end up, like I mentioned before, they may not be qualified any longer, but they stay in there according to the rules. You get to stay there. So personally, we have 500 houses, but maybe we only have 300 houses. Maybe we only have 200 that are meeting the today's modern needs, so we keep having to build more of them. The market rate house, if every builder has to, when he builds anything more than four, has to build something in this or put some money into it, it's going to automatically raise the price of a market rate house. So it's kind of like we develop a spread. We're building into this structure a problem. So I come back to the issue. I know there's a law here that we have to conform to, but to rapidly pick up the needs, rental apartments, quality rental apartments in areas can really do a great job. And then you can monitor those as a rental basis by annually having a form filled out for application and you can give them a real benefit there. But you can cycle them through there and you can really get a lot for your money.
Ms. Black, please.
Commissioner Idelson, I know that was probably more a comment than a question. But I think you raised some really good points. And first of all, many of the housing units we've built in the past were at low, very low, I mean, they were at all the income levels. And I think you encounter more difficulties that you described when you have for sale units at these lower income levels because you really do hope that people will be able to increase their economic position and move on. So the ordinance, as we've drafted it and are recommending it, really does provide for these lower income levels in a different way than we have in the past. It really does encourage that those units be provided by nonprofits who monitor on an annual basis. And when those people don't need those units anymore, they move into more market rate units. What we can't do is we can't have a system where somebody buys a unit at a certain, when they qualify at a certain market rate, and then kick them out and make them sell their unit if their economic situation improves. So that would be pretty awkward. So the, really, the way we're trying to get at it and the way we think it's most effective to provide especially those units at a very low and low level is to get money from developers who are primarily developing market rate units and use that money to leverage other funds and provide for the people who really need, have a substantial need for affordable housing. You're right, it does affect the cost of market rate units. I think the program that we, or the ordinance that we've outlined affects it less than the one that's on the books today. And I think Erica showed that really clearly in her comparison slides of what are the current requirements, how do those pencil out versus what, how would this pencil out? But it's, you know, it's still shifting some of that burden to those market rate units. And I think that's a policy decision that the Board of Supervisors made and will have to remake as they look at this ordinance.
Mr. Phillips, please.
I think it's important to remember that this is not a great deal for the workforce purchaser, appropriate purchaser. This gives the community an opportunity to hire people. Don't forget, this house will never go to market. If you bought one of these in 2000, you were, this was a bad deal because it didn't float up. It didn't triple the way ours did. So this is really for the community and should someone's economic situation improve, they should be out of there. And that's what would happen, I would think.
Madam Chair, that raises a really good point, too, which is, you know, this keeps the sales price of those units constant for some period of time. And so people aren't buying a low-income unit or a moderate unit or a workforce unit and saying, I'm going to make money off of this, because they're not. I mean, they don't increase very much. And so they're not really going to capture a benefit. And I think you're right. I think eventually, people will want to move into a different type of housing if they can afford it. That's the goal.
Commissioner Overall, please.
I have one question and then I have a couple of comments. The question relates to where commute time gets factored into the requirement for one area of the county versus another. Because I remember several years ago hearing, I think it was Rob Pearson, talk about the fact that we were building in the Santa Maria area, we were building housing for people who were commuting to Santa Barbara rather than workforce housing for people who work in the Santa Maria area. So it's, my question just goes to, how have you factored in, or have you factored in, the fact that people commute from one area to another? And that may in fact change what the needs are, so.
Commissioners, I think that's a great question. And while I can't say that we, say, for example, polled commute times or polled, you know, people living in one community, who drives where, things like that, that information is out there and is definitely in the back of our minds. For the purposes of this ordinance and this project, however, we let the economics speak for the project. And we sat back and looked at what the median sales price is and for different types of housing in each housing market area, you can see why the commute trends are the way that they are. You know, comparing the median sales price in the South County, which is upwards of $650,000 for all home sales, to Lompoc, which is more in the $175,000 range, that in our minds spoke to the, how enticing it is to live in an area that is, has a lower price and drive to a job that affords that house. So as I mentioned, while we didn't say actually map out the commute times, I think that was really what we considered, was that the appeal of living in the North County, price-wise, is definitely there. And what we wanted to do is have the ordinance respond to those trends and those median sales prices to require, say, more affordable housing in the South Coast to hopefully offset that need to commute so much if people can afford to live in the South Coast in a proportional or ratio that's based in the economics of the area. That's what we're hoping to achieve in the long run.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could add to that. Even though we didn't factor in commuting into the equations of the cost of these housing units, we are proposing a new policy on Attachment One, Exhibit One A. Policy 6-2 speaks to reduce the negative effects of commuting. The county shall promote inclusionary housing. So we are adding a policy that speaks to this issue.
Just, is it all right to move on to just general comments?
I think you've got it, Commissioner Overall. Thank you.
Madam Chair, perhaps before you go on to comments, because I think you've really been mostly asking questions, you might want to ask if there's anybody from the public who wants to address you. And I know I don't see anybody, but I just think we want to have that on the record. And then maybe you can close the public comment period and...
Would anyone in the public like to address the issue before us? If you, sir, would you like to address this on this issue?
No, I'm prepared for another question.
All right. Then we will close public comments, seeing no public comment. Thank you.
You just made us happy at this table.
I'm sorry, Ms. Overall. Back on the record. Please.
First, I'd like to say that I think what you've done is a good piece of work, given all the parameters that you have and the tasks that you were assigned. So I commend you on that. I think from a planning commission standpoint, I don't know that there's much we can do, but I just, I'll offer up my own personal observations. When we have something like this that comes before us, it troubles me a little bit because while we don't make policy, we are pretty close to the ground where those policies have an impact. And so, you know, where's the opportunity to offer comments that might in turn influence policy somewhere down the road? And I actually have three comments that I would offer. One is, there's nothing that was provided to us that really tells us the effectiveness of this program. It may be mandated by the state, the feds and all of that. But at the end of the day, I think you indicated there were 420 homes that existed. Well, how much of the, I don't have the knowledge to say that meets 20% of the total need, it meets 50% of the need, it meets 1%. So I think from a policy standpoint, if we were to have any input on it, it would be nice to have an effectiveness context provided. The in lieu money that comes in, whatever it is, the 62,000 or 64,288 or whatever it is, I can't imagine that that actually builds a home. But I don't know that. So I, I don't know how much it costs to administer the program. I don't know what the residual amount is that you're able to invest. But those would be nice things for a body that potentially has some input into the policy to have as a context in which we listen to it. So that would be one comment. And then the two comments that I have related to the specifics of the housing, one of them just seems like a, it may sound nice, it may sound fair, that seems to be a buzzword in the world these days. But the idea of saying, we're going to take our most expensive land, and we're talking about the coastal zone now, and we're going to try and put affordable housing in the coastal zone, seems on this, just on the face of it, to be an unrealistic approach. If you want to charge developer a fee just because they're going to develop something, it would be a lot more straightforward to say, we're just going to, this is the price of doing business in Santa Barbara and somewhere we allocate the money to go somewhere else to do something else. But, so I have a little bit of a problem with that. And then the, I think the biggest one is, and I was touching on it a little bit when I raised the question related to rental housing, one of the, one of the precepts in here, see if I can back up and find the exact wording that you had. Now, it's here, but I can't find it. It's to promote homeownership and owners living in homes. I have to say, I think that is an outdated policy assumption about what we need. I mean, actually, that approach as a contributor is what got us as a country and maybe as a planet into an economic mess. I think what we have to be concerned about is providing people shelter, decent homes. I don't think we have to provide them homeownership. I think we have to give them a place to live. And so I think to encourage the building of rental housing, which Dan brought up or Michael did, I can't remember, I mean, I think all of those ought to be a factor in the policy decisions that get made. And I don't know whether or not our Board of Supervisors frankly, that they have the time to dig into it that deeply and think about it. But I think those are legitimate questions, so that would be what I have to contribute. But again, I commend you on the job that you've done with what you were required to do.
Mr. Phillips, please.
I want to follow on Commissioner Overall's statement, just to touch, the, I agree that the homeownership goal probably isn't necessarily something the county needs to embrace, but providing an address, if you will, for essential services folks is very critical. And they have to live in the South Coast because they're not going to get here when we need them. But rentals work just as well. I'm in real estate and I'm talking to young people all the time, and they don't want to own homes as much as we used to. Rentals are fine with them for a while, and they see that their fathers and mothers are upside down on homes and they don't want to be there necessarily. Anyway, Mr. Overall makes a good point. There's other ways of getting to this. I'm sure this approach is legitimate as well. But in the future, maybe home subsidized or homeownership isn't the best answer.
I found many of the comments that have been made this morning and questions deserving of some answers or some discussion. Would anyone in the county like to lead us, particularly on the issue of shelter versus homeownership? I found that very interesting.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and especially Commissioner Overall, I think your comments were extremely thoughtful and important.
Important.
And I think that we will be able to provide better context to the Planning Commission and especially to the Board of Supervisors based upon your comments because it made me realize we haven't given you the whole picture. And it's not just about effectiveness, but what other programs do we have and what other ways do we address this really important need in the county? Effectiveness, this program is not the most effective way to provide for every type of housing. It's really meant to address one particular issue and it's really married with a lot of other approaches that the county takes from providing shelter services for, you know, the people who are in most critical need on an emergency basis, on a short-term basis, and we have very specific programs for that. We have the state bonus density law, which deals with affordable housing in a different way. We have the complication of the Coastal Act, which really does force this, what some might see as a logical use of very valuable land. I totally understand that. We have the Housing and Community Development Department, their housing unit, or the, sorry, the Community Services Department Housing Unit that works with mainly federal agencies to provide grants to people who do provide housing opportunities for very low and low income people. What this program is really intended to do is to provide some funds to get some very low and low income units built in our community to address a very significant need. And those units are by and large not, not ownership units. And to try and incorporate some opportunities for some people, and we're never going to satisfy everybody, everybody's desire, but for some people to have homeownership opportunities in a moderate and workforce, at a moderate and workforce level. Those units are easier to provide in a market rate unit project. It provides developers an option to do that. They can fee out if they want to, except in the coastal zone because of this other regulatory issue, the Coastal Act. So, I mean, we're really trying to just have one more tool for providing affordable housing. This is not the only tool. This is certainly not the tool that makes very low and low and shelter services available to the people in this community that really need it. And part of the, part of the modification that we felt we had to recommend based upon the change in affordable units, or excuse me, rental units being restricted, really I think does help rental projects because now they don't have this complication of having to go through our income certification. Mr. Tobes can build an apartment unit and deal with it in a way that makes sense and it provides opportunities for people to live here. So we're trying to fill a lot of varying needs and we hope that this will just be a better, a better way to do it in a more, more realistic way, given market conditions than what's currently on the books.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Mr. Idelson?
No.
All right. If not, is there anything further from staff? Any comments? If not... If not, we will now bring it back to the commission for Ms. Gottsinger.
Would you like a motion?
I would. I just wanted to say that I believe the procedure that we're asked to follow is that we would adopt a resolution to the County Planning Commission, which would consider this as a possible recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, which would have the final action on this item. So yes, please, Ms. Gottsinger.
So moved. I think you stated it quite well.
Oh, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Does that take into effect, into consideration both resolutions? All right.
Madam Chair, I would just clarify that. I believe that the motion and the second was to accept staff's recommendation, so we'll-
Yes, it was.
Your minutes will reflect that.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to thank the commission again. I know every hearing you have is a special hearing because of the change to the resolution that needs to occur, but this was really a special hearing because it was an additional, it was an additional hearing. We really appreciate it that the commission was willing to come in, and we really appreciate your thoughtful comments. And just a reminder, the holiday lunch is next Wednesday, so please let David know if you're able to attend.
And our next meeting is January 16th. We'll be meeting on the third Wednesday of each month beginning in 2013.
Correct.
Our special thanks to the staff for the report that you've prepared for us today, your staff report. Anything further from the commission? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.